All right, good evening everyone and welcome to the work session for Monday, February 12th. For the town of Bladensburg, we're now called to order. The first item on the agenda after being called to order is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So.
Approve.
So, we have a motion by Councilmember Brown and seconded by Councilmember Dixon. Any corrections or comments regarding the agenda? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, let it be known by the saying of "aye."
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it, thank you so much. As we move down into the approval of minutes, we have our January 8th work session minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Brown, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember McBride, any comments or corrections? I did just want to note to the council, I noticed that for some of the items that were under legislative update, they had the bill number but didn't reference HB or SB, whatever bill.
The SB on hospital.
They were, yeah, so I did want to get your input on whether or not everyone's okay with making that adjustment, so we know.
Yes.
Exactly which chamber those bills are being submitted for. And I believe that was the only thing that I noticed. Were there any other corrections from the team? No? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, let it be known by the saying of "aye."
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it, thank you so much. We do want to note, I got the message, Councilmember Blunt could not join us tonight and would like to ask for a motion to approve her absence.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Brown, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember McBride, any comments or questions? All right, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, let it be known by the saying of "aye."
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it, thank you for that. So, at this time, we do not have any appearances at tonight's meeting, and so we will move on to old business. Again, no items listed under old business for tonight. As we move further into item number six, we do have new business for the council's consideration, and we'll start with the review of council meeting items. Almost said council member. Town administrator Bailey Heschfass just rolling through.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm going to put up a PowerPoint that will hopefully show some of these, and so that I can kind of take you guys through the agenda for tonight. One second, I'm going to share my screen. On screen. Oh. Okay. May I share my screen? Okay. Yay, thank you. Okay. I'm going to put this in, presentation. Okay. All right. So, this is just an overview of all the key items for tonight. There is a piece of unfinished business, which we're calling unfinished business, it's the FY '24 and '25 budget update. Mr. Tonelli will give you a brief update on the budget calendar and where we are in our current spending. The next item is the adoption and approval of the financial statements and the audit report. We'll take a little bit of time in the council session, in this pre-session, to kind of review the financial statements, and again, myself and Mr. Tonelli will talk about our fiscal year 2023 financial statements. The first two items of other financial business are an adjustment, 6-2024 for the purchase of three vehicles, two Ford police interceptors and one Dodge Ram from New Holland Auto Group. They are to replace some vehicles that were owned by the town. The next one is a budget adjustment for the purchase of a mobile tower, which there, actually, it's two to three mobile towers which have been attached. I believe that this is something that the council would like to look at. There's a contract approval to execute a contract for Bates to renew our garbage and trash collection services. There's another contract approval in regards with Impact Design Center for the, and this just says "for," for the, for engineering and contract, engineering services for flood projects using ARPA dollars. There's a resolution for the town of Bladensburg to support reestablishing local land use, and then a resolution for the task force to plan the 20, the 250th, not the 25th, the 250th anniversary of the United States, and to form a, to help plan celebrations in the town of Bladensburg. Lastly, staff will just want to, wants to go through any session updates with the council that they may have and things that they'd like us to look out for. And finally, there's an information-only green team item. So, I'm going to start off with the first one, which is the 2024-25 budget overview. You know, Town Treasurer has provided a update on where we are in the current budget and expenditures, and then we're going to go through a couple of things for 2025. So, Mr. Tonelli, I'll let you kind of take the mic on from there.
Hey. If I could share my screen, please?
Yep, I'll stop sharing. Yes.
One second, I'm going to get out.
See, it's always a little transition time when you have to share the screen, so that's what happens.
Not only that, but it's, what's on my screen sometimes doesn't match up exactly to how I want to show it.
Yeah.
Can you see this? Fingers crossed.
You got it? It looks like you're sharing. Okay, I'm off.
Okay. How much time do I have on this, just so I know?
You know, keep it less than 10.
Yeah, 10 minutes?
10 minutes.
Yep, yep, yep.
Because it also helps you in, helps you in the main sessions.
I like the ish. Yeah, please. In your packet for the council meeting is my financial report, I put in there every month, I'm just going to touch on it real quick, where we are through January, it's up on the screen, and it's also about three-quarters way down in your financial report, I want to say it's, I mean, in your council meeting packet, it's going to be about two-thirds of the way down.
Is it Treasury report?
Yes, yeah.
Yes, it's right behind the Treasury report. Okay, so.
Okay, all right, so, you can just see it on screen too, you know, if you can see it on the screen, I'll try to blow this up a little bit.
Hold on.
Is that better? A little bit?
Probably for the county.
Yeah, okay, you're right, again, I see it different on here than, you know, so it's, just so you know, this, through January, and January is like 58% of the fiscal year gone, seven months, seven divided by 12, so you can see, we're just ahead of revenues right now, we've got 63% of our revenues in budget for the fiscal year, and some of this was accelerated for like the state and county funding, that is because we had the additional funds there from the, shoot, that's not ARPA, okay. ARPA's only half-spent, state and county funding, that is for the HUR revenues that came in, and you can just see along there, most of property taxes at the very top are in, because they're based on a January 31st, I mean, I'm sorry, December 31st collection date. So, in summary, down there at the total revenues, you can see, it's almost 7.5 million received against, around everything, against 12 million budgeted, if that makes sense. Going down to expenses, expenditures, I call them expenses, the correct terminology for government accounting is expenditures, but, you know, I'm trying to get used to that still, it's always been expenses, but, and again, you can see that we're 58% away through the year, so that's kind of like your guide on the way down here, your budget variance, actual to budget. Mayor and council is just above, and that's because we front-loaded a lot of the community events this year, and that, and that's why, because all those events happened, just about all of them happened the first seven months of fiscal year, and the budget for the full year. The town administrator's under because of contracts that are in but haven't been spent yet, town clerk, we have a vacancy there, finances on budget, public safety is operating just above budget, and that's for accelerated purchases, again, budget throughout the fiscal year, but they happen in like the first seven months, and also, they are a little bit ahead in pay, in payroll and compensation costs for overtime and also for workers' compensation Speed camera expenses, that's offset by revenues, Public Works is ahead of budget because of the highway user revenue projects that we did, again, they're budget for the whole year, and they happened all within the first six months.
First two months, yeah.
So, really, we're pretty much in line overall with expenses, so that's great news, you know, we're above in revenues and just about on target with expenditures. Now, and here is all of our budget amendments. Okay, so that's a quick financial update. Should we jump into the budget calendar, or do we?
Yeah, I mean, just, are there, are there any questions about what's been presented? Could I give you?
Councilmember Brown, did you have a question, or? Oh, sorry, I saw you reaching. Okay. No, it's helpful though, just to see where we are 75% of the way through the year. I wanted to ask, I know normally with the big capital purchases, you try to hold those until we're at this point around getting close to March or April, are there any things on the radar that we need to be thinking about? I know it's been a while since we did the full budget, so I'm trying to remember.
So, we're trying to, Mayor, I was like, so that's the reason why you see the two budget adjustments on this agenda, because I've asked people not to do them in March and April, because I don't want to convolute the two budgets and what people are asking for from this year to next year, so it's got to be an emergency if we're going to make any other large expenditures, what do you, I mean, I.
Other than what's on the current agenda.
What else in the current agenda, so, yeah, we don't have anything else planned. Even the projects that are the grant projects may occur later in the year, but they're also offset by grants, so that they may occur in May-June, but that's the only things that we anticipate, is that if we get the, if the bids come out for, let's say, the sidewalk improvements or the bridge improvements, which they should come out, those will be offset by grants, so there's not, it's not a new major spending that cannot be reimbursed back to us.
Thank you for that. I guess I was thinking in terms of, I know Mr. Hall's not here, but sometimes the public works vehicles get pretty banged up, beat up, and we do keep them for a very long time, so is there something like that that we should be thinking about?
We just, we purchased.
Coming up on the end of its useful life?
We purchased as part of the ARPA two new public works vehicles.
Right.
So, those have already been purchased, they actually arrived, they already, they've arrived, you, yeah, you approved them, yeah, they're outside.
They're sitting in the parking lot.
Yeah, they're sitting in the parking lot, you approved them as part of the ARPA, ARPA funds when we did that, so that's already been done for the year, that money is actually accounted for in your budget, that's what, that's why you see, that's why you see.
Under the budget amendments?
Yeah, yep. And that's what you also see when you're looking at their line item being so far over, sorry.
That's part of the $250,000 budget amendment for the, for the beautification was for the vehicles.
Ah, okay, okay.
Yeah, I loaded it into that, that, I loaded it into that so that you had it all in one purchase, yeah, one thing, so that's where it is.
Thank you for that. Were there any other questions, Councilmember Brown?
Well, I mean, we asked, actually, when I looked at the budget amendments, so it's pretty self-explanatory, the ARPA funds and what it was for, so that's what I was going to ask Mr. Vito about, but it's pretty, pretty self-explanatory.
I put those there for people and myself as well to keep track, you know, so.
Yeah, I like that, thank you.
It's always out in front. Some of the things to think about for next fiscal year as we start doing the budget, is it okay to do this?
Yeah, go ahead, that's what, that's the, this is the next part.
Yeah. So, this is our tax, okay, so that's our total assessment at the top there, that $564,839,000. I'm not sure where that is in your binder, I think it's under.
Yeah, it's under, it's right on the top of the report, I think it's, that's where it is, I, my binder's a mess.
Okay.
If I were to, I did not put my binder together like theirs, I, I did run out of steam for that, I'm sorry, this weekend, ran out of steam. It's, I think it's, I think it's under the.
Next time, I'm going to do a binder for myself too, so I can tell you right when it's time.
It's under the second one, but I can, but it's.
It might be under.
It's under, it's right under the finance section, yeah, it's under number one.
That's under the calendar.
Unfinished, unfinished businesses, underneath the calendar, yeah.
Under the council meeting one now, yeah.
Oh, wait, the second set, the second, the second set, yes.
Sorry, y'all. Is that it, Mayor, can you hold that up? That's a calendar.
Yep.
Yes, thank you, okay.
Okay. All right, so, do you want, are you okay for him to, you guys, everybody, can everybody see it? Okay, okay.
Okay, so, if you look at the screen up front, I can show you.
Okay.
All right, so, a total net assessable property base for the town for FY '24 is $565,000, rounded. So, every penny of tax, we charge 74 cents tax per $100, okay, for the real property tax. So, every penny of tax is $56,000 revenue to the town to fund services. So, 56,000 times 74 comes up to that $4.1 million down there that we collect in real estate taxes, real property taxes, that's paid to the county and the county remits to us, and that's a big part of our budget. It's gotten a smaller part as ARPA has increased, but ARPA's not going to be there long, so then, you know, ARPA's going to go away, and this is going to be a much larger piece of the pie again. I just did that to show you what really drives a budget, what's the true variable. We'll get the new assessments on Valentine's Day. Every year, we get, we get the new assessments, and that's when we start the budgeting process.
Our love note, yes.
Yeah, so, budget challenges for FY '24, this is what we're looking at already as we start putting the budget together. The ARPA funds are going to go away, so, they're great while they last, but, you know, all things come to an end. Increases to staff for COLA and merit, continued funding of new positions we put in the budget, and, you know, that includes the beautification for public works, and also.
The SAT team.
The SAT team funded through speed camera expenses.
Yep.
Okay. We're also going to see increases for insurance, which includes health insurance, we're getting creamed with workers' comp insurance right now, and also liability insurance. We're going to need some vehicle replacements if we're going to stay on task to keep the fleet updated, so, these are some of the challenges.
Put fire department support.
Yeah, department support, and also, we need to set a new baseline if we're going to think about how to fund the debt service on a new town hall. So, just some things to toss out there, I mean, that might not happen next year, but we got to start thinking long-term with that. So, and that's, so that's the kind of things that we are looking at now, I want to show you something real quick here.
Flip it to the side. Look at you, fancy.
There you go, there you go.
Yeah, it did.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to get this full screen.
And you got to, you got to now cut over, take this off.
Yeah, help me out. Where's, where's full screen on this? I'm sorry.
There you go.
Okay.
There you go.
So, this is the tax rates for all the municipalities in Prince George's County. I'm sorry, this is the.
You can, yeah, the.
Business personal property tax rate, that's one thing, okay, so, business personal property tax rate, the county charges $2.50 per $100 of assessed business personal property, okay, and the municipalities in Prince George's County can also do their own municipal tax on business personal property. We'll do real property next. I just wanted to show you all where some of the municipalities fall, and where Bladensburg falls on this as well. You know, the personal property taxes go from zero all the way up to very high, which is Seat Pleasant, so, just to show you where we are, we are right here in the.
$2.
$2.09, okay. Now, this red line is a county tax, and, and why it decreases as the municipal rate increases is to offset the tax differential, so.
So, you want, do you want to explain what, does everybody understand?
I was going to say, so for the tax differential.
I'll put that on for next meeting.
Okay, but for those who are watching now and may not watch the 7 o'clock meeting, really, the tax differential is where we're duplicating county services, and so the cost to save taxpayers goes back to the resident, it doesn't come back to the town. So, if we're providing public works and the county is providing public work services, there's an offset to the taxpayer, so they're not being billed twice for those taxes, but Vito will do a more in-depth presentation.
Yes.
At our 7 o'clock meeting.
Yeah.
Well, I think we'll do it in our.
Not on the tax differential.
Okay, just an overview.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll do it in March, because we'll tell you what, how our tax differential came out in March and how, and what we did. Yeah, that's March.
So, this is the real estate tax rates, what you see on the screen right now, and they're sorted from lowest to highest in the county. Again, that yellow line at the top is the county tax rate of a dollar of assessed values per 100, okay, and it decreases as a municipality provides more service. So, for instance, like Fairmont Heights has a tax rate of 42 cents, but their county tax rate instead of a dollar is 93 and a half cents, because they provide some services to their residents that the county does not have to do, okay, so, and just to go all the way over, where Bladensburg is.
We're at 87.
Yeah, we are at .74, and our residents get a pretty good discount of 12 cents off the county tax rate, because Bladensburg provides police protection, 24/7 dispatch, code enforcement, public works, and we support the fire department as well. So, our tax rate is probably in the top one-third, I would say, but that's just a graph to show you where everybody lies.
Can we, can, can I also kind of, so the one thing that we were commenting on is that the graph doesn't really tell the whole story, because some municipalities charge more for different segments of housing that they may have, and businesses, and their business tax, like in the case of Seat Pleasant, they charge point 12, 12%, I mean, 12, $12 when we charge 2 for their businesses. So, everybody sort of does theirs a little bit differently, so that when you kind of balance everything out, you've got some things that are higher, it depends on how people tax their residents or tax their businesses, so in some cases, like some municipalities may change, may charge multifamily housing, more property tax than single-family housing, and I feel, we were able to see that, and I think.
Commercial real estate.
Commercial real estate taxes are higher on some, I think Mount Rainier is probably a good example, and what we're going to do is kind of bring you some examples of local municipalities that might have tiered pricing, because I know that for single-family residents and that they may, that, I mean, for your homeowners, that you may want to have one charge, but maybe for rental property, multifamily, you may have a different one, and those are things that other, other municipalities have instituted, so when you see this across the board, that's just their personal property, single-family, correct? That's how it falls.
Yeah, okay, so, this one up here is just their non-commercial real estate. Okay, so, single-family homes, it's not, because as Michelle said, some tax it as, you know, apartments or multifamily homes or in a business district, and it's just all over the place sometimes, you know, so, but, the, I mean, their rates are close, it might be like 71 cents of this class.
80 cents.
73 cents that class, you know, so it's, but, and it's up to each individual municipality, so.
Right, but we wanted to be able to show you that and to say, because it's not, it's not necessarily apples to apples, and I think some of that is, and then when you have some municipalities, let's say, an example of like College Park, well, why is College Park lower? They don't have a police force. They, they've signed it over, so, they can keep a lower, but most, they have a much bigger Public Works and things like that, so, you know, those, those employees are different costs, so there's things that if we want to compare ourselves to jurisdictions, we then have to like also say, what are they not providing that we're providing? So, I just wanted to kind of give that so that you can, because it does like, well, why is, how can they charge this amount while they got a much smaller police force? Or no police force?
Exactly, or don't, don't have a 24/7 dispatch.
That's a, yeah.
Which is huge, and also, some police forces are not 24/7 either.
Right.
So, you know, but, so that is just kind of to set the tables home, you know, and.
I think we, we passed 10 minutes, didn't we, Sean?
Yeah.
Yes.
I just want to talk real quick, real quick about the budget calendar, if that's okay.
I'm going to go buttercup it.
Yeah, I was like, I can go fast, don't worry.
Yeah, thanks, Michelle.
You're welcome.
All right, hold on. Budget calendar, again, this thing popped up on the side, Michelle.
Okay, all right, I'm on the side.
Knock that out for me, please.
Yeah, oh, the side thing? I think you have to hit.
There we go.
All right, anyway.
I didn't let my kid go, I'm like, I don't know why I didn't.
Okay.
Yeah, there we go.
There you go, can you hear that?
Budget calendar. We're in February, right now, as I said, on the 14th, we'll get our new property tax assessments coming in from the state. Next month's mayor and council meeting on the 11th, and I'll also do my constant yield presentation, and I can also throw in the tax differential presentation as well. The, and again, that just sets up budget conversations. April is where we start really dogging into the budget, we're going to have the town administrator's draft FY '25 budget at the April 8th mayor and council meeting, and we have two budget sessions scheduled for April, and again, this is all, you know, up to change, you know, it, yes.
On the April schedule. Yeah, the 22nd, the calendar says 22nd, but the.
25th.
Yeah.
But it's the 22nd, right?
It is the 22nd, it's going to be a Monday. Yes, thank you for the good catch.
When sign and die day, is that the?
Is it the 15th or 16th? Is it the 15th?
I'm not sure.
I should put that on there just in case anybody needs to go to.
Yeah, we'll, we'll adjust it if sign and die is on the 15th.
Yeah.
Okay.
May is the, they, they're changing the constant yield process, and I'm not going to know until the February 14th assessment letter if we got, go through that whole thing again or not.
We have to do the.
Yeah.
Okay. So, Valentine's surprise.
Yeah, so, I think keep that on the agenda. I have another budget work session scheduled for May, number three, and takes us into June, budget work session number four needed, and finally, on June 10th, on the, on the passage of the FY '25 budget. So, those are the tentative dates. So those are the tentative dates. Again, you know, it's up to change, we can add more work sessions, drop some, you know, so.
That is helpful, and then I did look it up, sign and die is April eighth.
Oh, so it's early.
It's early.
So it's the one, so it's the other one, so we won't have the eighth.
So it's the same night, and this does sometimes happen, second Monday in April, which is a council meeting night.
Yeah. So we can, so we'll move to, if we can, if you, if you might want to make that motion, I mean, you know, to move to the Tuesday, we can always do that.
Okay.
The council can always make that motion.
Okay.
Well, that's a quick, you know, if anybody has any questions or anything, I know, it's a whole lot of data, I know, I'm sorry, you know, so.
And Councilwoman Dixon, we will walk you through this as well. Yeah, we know that this is, that's why we're starting slow now, just to kind of introduce the concepts.
Yep, yep.
We're just, we're trying to introduce the concepts, don't worry, you're doing fine.
Yep.
All right, so we still-
But that's all I have, Mayor.
Appreciate you walking us through, Mr. Tenelli, so we'll keep moving, because we have a question to get through.
I can keep moving.
I went over, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, it's all right.
It was all good information. I think this is still technically you, the under financial business reviewing the audit.
Sorry.
I know that the part of it is that we have an enhanced, just so we can get to it, part of the audit this year is an enhanced audit due to the federal funds that we were receiving for ARPA, so it's a little bit more stringent than we've had. I would say that, correct?
Correct.
All right, so then I'm teeing it up for you to then start with some of the small issues or, and things like that. I mean, I can talk about the finding, do you want me to do that?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll talk about the finding. So Vito was very upset, because we actually did have a finding this year. The audit finding was for a lack of supervisor signatures on two of eighty time sheets that were sampled by the, by the auditors. They have, they occurred in, I mean, November of, actually, the two, two of the main ones are from November during the Thanksgiving holiday of 2022. And so the staff was away during that period of time, and the town administrator at the time didn't sign those. From that, we've written a finding, I mean, we've written a response saying that we will, we have, we will now make sure that all, God bless you, all, all time sheets are signed and that we have a process for making sure that there's no, that there should be no, this should not happen again. And that, so that was the only finding that we had.
It's not really a finding, it's more of like a-
What is, it's not really a-
It's a notice, correction of like internal controls. A finding would be something that would be like sincerely financial, that would be a footnote-
Right.
To the audit, so, we still have no findings.
We still have no findings.
Change, can we change that wording to say notice of correction instead of finding?
Yeah, I'll let the auditor maybe give the exact language, maybe, you know what I mean?
Because they put finding next to it, and that's the reason why I had to put finding.
Yeah.
They did, they noted as a finding, but I want you to, they will be able to explain it better, but I just wanted to make, be upfront on what the issue was.
Yeah, and we appreciate you flagging that, we did read that in the detailed audit report, but I do think we take pride in our practices and following our rules, but I will say, we're dealing with people, and people make mistakes at times, so are we proud of this? No, absolutely not, we don't want any blemishes, but this is really a blemish, this is not a finding, an audit finding would be something of concern, of much bigger scale, that we would have to do more in terms of a response to, so I do think it is important to clarify the distinctions. And then I did just want to ask, I know in past years, the auditors would come to the seven o'clock meeting and present, are we doing that this year with auditors?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, okay.
So I might want to defer talking about all this, because I want to do it in their language, you know, so they'll take care of that about seven fifteen or so.
So we just wanted to make sure that you knew what was coming up and to expect them.
And just a quick thing, our net position increased by six hundred and some thousand dollars last fiscal year, which is always great, so, but they will talk more about that in their presentation at seven fifteen. If that's okay, I mean, I can touch on some of this now, or just-
It's fine, we can defer for them, but I do appreciate under the independent note at the front of the report to the council, it does say, in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material aspects, or sorry, in all material respects to the respective financial position of the government activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information of the town of Bladensburg, Maryland, as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, and the respective changes in financial position for the year then ended in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. So it is important to point that out, but there's a reason that we do audits, it's because mistakes can happen, and we need to have someone who can catch those and help us put the right measures in place to prevent them as we move forward, so the audit worked. Right?
And it's a draft form right now until it's approved by the mayor and council, so, I mean, it's, you know, so it's just procedures, so. And that opinion the mayor just read is what everybody grabs for first thing, when they pick it up and audit up, you know, it's like, foot right to the thing page, and then they go into the financials, so.
You know us well. It's like, what's my grade? And now I'll go back and see, you know, how the test questions were rated and so forth.
Yeah, so I have that up on screen, but again, Eva Webb from LSWG will go through all this in detail.
Okay, so do you want me to start?
All right, so we will continue on, we have item number two under-
Yep.
Financial business with, which town administrator Bailey Hedgepath touched on previously regarding the approval of a budget adjustment for expenses related to the purchase of two 2023 Ford Police Interceptors Utility All-Will Drive, and one 2023 Dodge Ram 1500 from New Holland Auto Group for the Police Department in an amount not to exceed $135,188 from speed camera proceeds.
Yes, and so that's, so basically this is a replacement of two vehicles that were tot, three vehicles that were totaled, two Ford and Ford Interceptors and a Dodge Ram that were totaled in accident. The town will, we see proceeds from these vehicles, and those proceeds will be put into the general fund, so that will be a credit to the general fund once they're received by Legit. The next item is budget adjustment seven dash twenty-four, and that's again for the portable light towers, not to exceed an amount of 158, 230. The town has, we've, I've actually had a lot of success with this project of having the light towers and the mobile camera units in different places, so we're expanding this so that we can serve more residential complexes and also more commercial locations, so that's what this will be doing.
Great, thank you for the overviews, and looking at budget adjustment six dash 2024, and just knowing from the financial report that we received, we're going into budget planning season, is it possible to get for the council our claim history? Because I think that will be important as we think about how we need to budget going forward, given the accidents, I mean, we have to be realistic-
We-
In terms of how we're looking at this.
That's gonna be part of your, Mayor, that will be part of your, our report to you as part of the budget, we will provide you information on our claims history, and we're gonna, we've asked that from Legit in regards to what we've done in the last two, three years, so that we can be able to provide you a somewhat of an estimate of how much it's gone up and kind of give you a tracking.
Yeah, that'll be helpful, so we can plan accordingly.
Would that be a closed session item, because I don't know if there's personal information-
I would say that we would give you aggregate data in the public session, if you have questions in regards to any employee matters, we would, would ask for that to be in a personnel session.
Yeah, that definitely makes sense. Any questions from the council regarding the budget amendments? I know, I do want to mention the light towers are working, and I felt bad, I had to go to chief twice last week, because people from various parts of the community are seeing them, and they know that those are preventative measures, or when incidents do happen, that we can get the video, and so they're in hot demand, so there's two communities in particular, and we're two that reached out for some support, and I basically had to say, we want to give light towers to everyone, truly, but the reality is, we have to look at our statistics and where the crime stats indicate that the problem areas are, and really focus and target those areas, and then we can kind of back off and rotate in other places, but it is a testament to the fact that people in the community see them, they know that they're working, and, and they're very supportive of us trying to use technology to assist with crime reduction. So kudos to chief, who couldn't be here with us tonight, but to the Police Department, we do want to express our gratitude for you thinking ahead of the curve and using technology to assist. So with that, that concludes financial business, and we'll now move down into new business, starting with contract approval eleven dash 2024.
Okay, so contract approval eleven dash 2024 is a contract with Bates Garbage Collection. I wanted to just provide some highlights, and I actually have an additional couple of highlights to put in this, this would be a five-year term with one, two, with two one-year extensions. The new rate per household is $26 from, up from $24. We would look at a CPI adjustment happening in March 2026. We've added a new location of a town dumpster, a second town dumpster, because we need a recycling dumpster. There's fuel surcharge language, some changes in the liability limits that are on there. We will stay with the same two days a week service from Bates, there's no change in that, and then we've added some language in regards to EEOC and, EEO and environmental language. The other part that I would like to kind of share is that in regards to this contract, what we're looking at is that we're currently, we've been out of contract for over two years, we are paying a fuel surcharge, right now, that is, goodness, is it seven? About seven thousand a month?
Yeah.
It's a month?
Yeah.
So we're paying a significant fuel surcharge, because we are out of contract, and the way that we've negotiated our new fuel surcharge is that we would not be paying the fuel surcharge unless the, the rate of diesel exceeds 499. So that's, that's a major incentive for us to move into this, even with the $2 more per household. What we also did in regards to negotiating this contract is that we sent out information to, through the state bid, to figure out where everybody else was, and when we put the state bid, we got the state bid information together, those contracts exceeded the two, the twenty, the $26 for the two times, two times a week pickup that we are currently going with Bates. And then we also worked with the Port Town municipalities on their contracts, and we have adopted, we're adopting similar language and similar terms to the other Port Towns. Ours is Comar Manor, I'm sorry, Cottage City just adopt, I always get the two of them confused, Cottage City just adopted Bates, and they are paying 26 as well for theirs, and then Edmiston is also, is paying a little bit less, but they adopted theirs two years la, two years earlier, and I did try to get our same price, so Mr. Bates will try to tell you that I was like, I wanted the same price as Edmiston, I was told no, because I would need to pay more of a surcharge, and I'm, I'm done with surcharges. So this is, this is our, our best and final, Sue Ellen has sent me some, some of the new language, and I will have that printed out, and I will also put that language online, because she did make some changes from the one that you have, but it's not significant, she changed the order of everything, and she did make a little bit of a change to the way that the liability scale reads, because she believes that we cannot, this is language that other people have in theirs, and she says that we should not have it per vehicle, we should have an aggregate amount, because on the insurance form, it will not look like that, so, but it will be for the higher limits that we've asked for. So I just wanted to kind of give council that overview, and if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Thank you for that overview, I, no, I appreciate, we still have our bulk trash pickup for the benefit of the residents, we will continue to collect up to four bulk items per resident, but please note, with appliances that have CFC refrigerants and PCB-type capacitators, or capacitors, I'm sorry, those items have to be disposed of in accordance with state, federal, and local government requirements, so we won't be able to touch those, but your general stoves, dryers, old washers, and household items will still be available for bulk trash pickup. The other item is, I want to reinforce, for household trash, it is Tuesday and Friday between the hours of 6:00 AM and 7:00, in situations where we're alerted that they're behind schedule for whatever reasons, let's say, for example, they're coming off of a holiday, we will continue to work with Bates to get that update and push out community notifications, so no change there. Yard waste will continue to be collected on Monday of each week between 6:00 AM and 7:00 PM, and again, bulk trash will continue to be collected on Fridays of each week between the hours of 6:00 AM and 7:00, but residents will still be required to call the day before. We'll continue to put those reminders out, because you have to request by Thursday, usually midday, in order to receive pickup for the next day, Friday. I also want to note that the current payment for this contract is based off of 792 residential units at the cost, as was said, $26 per month per unit, so the total is 200, $247,104 for the annual agreement, so again, just want the residents to understand how much funding we're talking about for the overall contract. Anything else the council wanted to just highlight for the community and their benefit as you're looking through here? I think that was everything, but I just wanted to-
No, no, Mayor, that's very, very big.
Sometimes residents get nervous when we say trash contract, and they think, oh, gosh, you're dropping us back to one day a week, or this is going to be, so we just want to be clear.
I know that the other question that I did get was in regards to recycling, the Bates is still a recycling contractor, but we do not have a contract with them for recycling, the county has that contract, we have a contract with the county to pay their recycling, so that contract remains the same until that, until that comes up for expiration, which I believe it comes up in the next couple of years if we want to change that one, so those will all remain the same for this. And I think there was just, I mean, I had another question in regards to some of the condo units and them being covered underneath this, they, we've always done that as part of our council, because they are also paying for those fees, so we've always had dumpsters there, and I just wanted to say that remains the same.
Yeah, thank you for that, because really it helps those residential areas to benefit from our pricing, but as you noted, they're still paying for those services, and so just for transparency sake, for those who are watching, that would include Bladen Woods condominiums, Parkway condominiums, of course, the Bladensburg Town Hall complex, plus the additional dumpster that you were able to negotiate for us, so. I just want to say too, I appreciate the fact that we have this opportunity to continue our partnership with Bates, they're a Bladensburg-based business. Bruce Bates, the owner, is someone who grew up in the community, went to Bladensburg High School, so we are, yes, investing these dollars into a business for services, but it's a Bladensburg business, it's also a minority-owned business, what I also appreciate about him is he hires those who need second chances, and so they're integrating them back into society through employment, so the fact that we're supporting a company that's local and has all these positive attributes, I think makes us feel a little better about supporting them with this contract. And to be transparent, when we have challenges, which sometimes we do, they're right here, so we can call them up and go around the corner and meet with them to address the issues, and say, you missed this address, and we work out getting that person's trash picked up, who, for whatever reason, missed it. Now, I won't talk about those of you who call us when you put your trash out after they've gone by. We will not talk about that tonight, because we do get those calls. We're not talking about those tonight. So anyway, any further comments or questions from the team? All right, hearing none, we will proceed with contract approval twelve dash 2024.
Thank you, I'm done trash talking, so the next contract, I had to say it, you had to, you have to, you have to have that joke when you talk about that. So the next one is to allow the town administrator to execute a contract with Low Impact Design Center. We've held it back some ARPA funds within our public works dollars to be able to have, have the Low Impact Design Center to do some planning and some engineering work, that's really key for us in regards to trying to get funding for flood projects. There are a couple of big projects that are coming up that we would like to, as far as the green, the green streets, green cities, community, green streets, whatever, that grant is in March, and then there's a funding from NIFWhF and some other, which is National Wildlife and Fish, that's NIFWhF, for some planning dollars and some funding dollars. So this is to basically have a contract with Low Impact Design- have a contract with Low Impact Design to do this design work. We used a big, a piggyback contract that is, again, working with, they work with the town of Chevrolet and the town of Hyattsville on these types of projects, and they've gotten significant dollars for them. But we do need to do some pre-work in order to be able to work with them. And I'm asking for $30,000 out of the budget that we've set. And the attachment has the actual hours and the actual project scope of what they're going to be working on, as far as, and the deliverables that they will provide within the next three months. It's a, it's a quick project for them to put this stuff together, so that I can have a whipped-up thing for, for these grants. So it's sort of like, I can't do the opposite. I've been asking for planning money for them, and hopefully it'll come through, but it takes six to eight months to get that planning money. So we will try to do some of this planning up in front, and then we can then say, hey, we've got this plan, fund it, please. So that's what I'm asking for.
Thank you for that overview. And just for the benefit of our residents who are watching, so just to kind of go a little deeper in the description from our town administrator. So the LID Center will provide planning support related to identifying and evaluating potential storm water management projects, determining the level of complexity, and providing rough cost estimates, to her point about having the information for the grants that we go after. The information will, again, assist the town in ensuring that we can secure new funding. A lot of times, we need that technical expertise upfront to help build the case for our grant applications. And the second item that they would be helping us with is financial and technical service provider engagement. So the town of Bladensburg is actively seeking support for multiple storm water-related projects that also provide additional community benefits. It's no secret that flooding continues to be a problem in urban communities, and so the LID Center will help the town prepare one-to-two-page project briefs that provide basic information for each project, and just help solidify and strengthen our case for the importance of why we need those funds to the potential funders. So just wanted to go a little bit deeper into what they provide or are looking to provide us, and the goal certainly is to bring in more grant dollars to help with some of these projects. And the nice thing about this effort is that it dovetails nicely with the bigger project, which is the flood barrier project that we're working with the county on. So if we can be doing both to mitigate some of the impacts of flooding, hopefully in the next three to five years, big picture, we're seeing there's been little incremental developments to improve the storm water management situation and reduce flooding. And then when that bigger-scale project is completed, we can all sit back and breathe a sigh of relief when those heavy rains come, as they will continue to. So, thank you for that. I'm sorry, Councilmember Dixon, did you have a comment?
I was just saying, climate change is a problem, a huge one.
I agree. So anything we can do to assist, you know, mitigating some of those threats is certainly important. The next item is Resolution 6-2024.
I'm trying to get to that one. I put them in, they're in a weird order, I don't know why.
It's all right.
So Resolution 6-2024 is a resolution supporting the legislative initiative in regarding reestablishing local land use. Currently, there's a bill in the General Assembly that in the, in the, in part of legislative session, that will effectively, in some ways authorize, which will authorize in some ways, the local government bodies in Prince George's County to sit as a planning board in lieu of the Prince George's, the Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Board, which is, currently does this. What we're asking is for the council to write a letter, a resolution for, that would say that we are in favor of this type of a change, and giving those substantive powers to the local government. There are locations within the state where this is a normal practice for the municipal bodies to make these changes, and there's actually examples in Prince George's County that are exempted from Maryland Park and Planning for the, like, the city of Laurel. So that's what, that's what this bill does, that's what the resolution is in regards to, and I'm here to ask if there are any questions.
Just was wondering, I know another Prince George's County municipality submitted us, or they passed a similar resolution. Should we include the actual reference number in here?
When we did it before, because of the, the reason why I did it is, just in case there's changing of the, like, if the House bill changes slightly, or the, because we've seen this bill change a little bit in regards to who will get the, so I think that that's the reason why I left it vague, because when District Heights did it, they did not have the bill in there. So I just left it still in that same format, because if there are any changes, or somebody comes up with a new bill, I'm thinking we might see two bills on this.
Okay, that makes sense. And I just have one other thing, and I'll come to you, Councilmember Brown. On page one, whereas, just wanted to make sure municipal was supposed to be there, second to last, whereas-
Yeah, I'll check it. One second. Let me, will you open it, because I'm going to lose it on mine. And if not, we can remove it, and I can change it to you guys. That's the, that's number six, the one right before. Are you on up there?
Yes.
I might need to be removed.
Okay.
It's up, no, it's up to, it's one, it's right here. You said the second whereas?
Yeah, it's second from the bottom.
Second from the bottom.
Whereas, I think municipal is an extra word there.
Yeah, whereas other Maryland agencies, yeah. I was thinking, I will, it's like an extra, you're right. Whereas other, it should be like other municipal governance.
Yeah.
We can, I can make that change.
Okay, perfect. Councilmember Brown, you have a question?
Yes. And is this the, the bill regarding giving the municipalities land use authority?
Yes.
Okay. And is this the one that I mentioned, where, you know, what is the financial implications to municipalities? Because while, you know, it's a, it's a great idea, but it's a, it has a cost attached to it. So, but, but I do also remember Tony Perez mentioning something that supposedly says something about municipalities also being able to opt out.
Exactly. So it's more of the, so I think that's where, that's where Tony's advice is, is one, we can opt in or opt out, that there, that you're constantly, you're actually paying a portion to the county for some of these services, again. So if we picked, it's almost like the same, it would change the dynamic of the cost differential again, if the, if we, if we, if there was that. So I think that all can be determined, and it'd have to be a period of time, Councilwoman, if this ever is adopted, that we'd have to make a transition time. So it will take some time, and what we can do is we can provide, if we can, if you, if you'd like, you can amend to put a caveat in regards to cost, I think, into the, into this resolution tonight. But I think it's something that staff will be very mindful of before we opt in or opt out to it.
Yeah, because we're, you know, I know that we're looking at annexation and everything, but you know, we're, you know, getting all of these could be potential, all the additional costs, but there's no additional-
Revenue.
No revenue coming in.
So Councilmember, would you want to put in the resolution that, an opt-out clause, or when we are submitting testimony for the bill, that we say we're in support with an opt-out clause for municipalities?
Yes.
Because I think that's the bigger piece, where we need them to give it to us.
Versus us saying it in the bill, because, I mean, in our resolution, we need to, we need to advocate for exactly what you're saying, which is, yeah, Mayor.
So we can do it in our letter?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Perfect. Okay. Excellent. So we all agree on that. And we'll move on to item four, Resolution 7-2024.
Yes.
I guess this is more on me.
That's you. I should put a flag there.
There's a beautiful flag.
For 1776.
For the flag. So I am asking for the support of my colleagues. As I shared last month, I was appointed by Governor Wes Moore to the task force to plan celebrations for the country's 250th anniversary of the United States. And so want to lead by example by having a task force in Bladensburg, similar to what we did for the War of 1812 celebration, where we get some of our community experts to help come up with ideas to commemorate this momentous occasion. And so a resolution has been drafted by our wonderful town administrator. Just, again, codifying the support, bless you, for this event. And just, some of the things will be straightforward. For example, we already have an annual fireworks celebration for Independence Day, so perhaps in 2026, for the 250th anniversary, we do our celebration on July 4th, rather than the 5th or the 8th, which could align and doesn't have a major budget implication, because it's something we're already doing. However, there are some things that you'll hear about, actually, if you register for MML's webinar in two or three weeks, I think it is, where we'll be presenting on some of the things that we want to recommend to communities. So one idea is similar to the Citizens Police Academy. There's a civics academy we're proposing that communities do to educate community members about how their government works, how to engage with the government, and ideas like that. And we also want to do things that are inclusive, having children participate in those efforts. So again, this resolution is just to authorize me to proceed with having a task force to help plan the celebrations and report out, again, similar to the model for the War of 1812, where we meet, and then we come back reporting to the council and asking for permission on some of these ideas, because it is for Bladensburg. So, any comments or questions or revisions to the resolution? Councilmember Brown?
This is great. I guess my, in terms of, in terms, I think it's a definitely, congratulations, again, congratulations to you. Yeah. But, and I think it's, you know, it's really good. But what about funding? Is there?
So the task force, and that's what I'm saying, we'll have to come back to say we want funding now. Doesn't make sense when we don't know what we're doing. If we're doing the civics academy virtually, well, then we can use Zoom. If we're doing it here, we may need to come back and ask for funding for refreshments. So I think that what would be appropriate is, once it's established, I can call a meeting, try to get a framework together, and come back, as I said, and report to the council. This is what we'd like to do. We have money already in our community events, and so some of that could be allocated if the council agrees for this effort, because we want to be leading up to it the year in advance. So it's not that there'd be a budget impact now. Now it would just be meetings, you know, via Zoom, and coming up with ideas, trying to figure out what makes the most sense, and building out a good proposal. But at some point, yes, there will be a budget implication, similar to the celebration for the War of 1812. The town did set aside funding to really celebrate our history. That was a big milestone in our history, and so I would anticipate that we would want to put that good look on. And then knowing too, the history of our area, we could very well find that, in particular for July 4th, 2026, this may be a place where the governor and lieutenant governor may come, because of the history and the richness of this community. So absolutely. But I can't give you a dollar amount until we meet and start putting some ideas together. So you'll hear more during the budget planning process. Councilmember McBride?
Will this entail just Bladensburg, or?
Correct. So this committee would just be a task force to plan the Bladensburg celebration. The committee, the working group that I'm on for the state, yeah, it's on, that's a bigger statewide effort. But what we're encouraging people to do across the state of Maryland, is in each of the towns and cities, create a little task force or working group, where you come together and start planning celebrations. So it's, the statewide goal is for us to get all the communities across the state to participate. So from the eastern shore to southern Maryland, western Maryland, we want every community celebrating. It's our history, and we're a part of it. So we don't want a cookie cutter kind of history. We want to show exactly how far this state has come, and also recognize that we still have a long ways to go. We've made some progress. We have some things to be proud of, but we still have some work to do. Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Dixon?
So I want to say congratulations. Awesome. I think this would be a great opportunity, especially for our community, just to come together and to reflect and to share the history of the town, and also to share the richness, the rich heritage of Bladensburg. So it would be a great opportunity just to share the richness and the vibrancy of this.
And the one thing I thought you were going to say is, we have to have our youth involved.
Of course.
Yes. That would be an aspect of it.
Of course, of course.
All right. Well, thank you all for that discussion. The next item, we have our legislative session updates, and I'm trying to watch the time, too, so.
So Mayor, I don't have much. It's more of the fact that I wanted to be able to put something on the agenda, if there were any bills that the council members would like us to watch. I just sort of put these up from the MML legislative priorities, because I was like, theirs are very broad, and if there's anything that anyone sees, that will be on the next agenda, so that if you want to bring them to my attention and to Tony's attention, we can do that in a public session.
Thank you for that. So just to clarify, he will be here for the 7 o'clock meeting?
No, he won't, but I will be taking notes for him, and I will be putting it together, because it's hard to get him to come to every session. So, well, we, but I, I think that the question would be, is if you need, if we would like him to come in March, as the, as the session is sort of waning, we will, I can actually invite him now, so that we can make sure that he can be here for that.
Yeah, I think that would be good, because that'll be a month out before it ends, so just, yeah, for crunch time.
I'll send him an invite today.
Okay. And then the other thing to be made aware of is our good resident, Ms. McCutcheon and I, we're on a prep call today for Delegate Nicole Williams. Her legislation regarding the MAG Lev in the House is coming up for a committee hearing on February 22nd. And in case I have a conflict, I may need a volunteer to read oral testimony. It's great submitting it in writing, but I will tell you, if you can join via Zoom and testify, just short and sweet, not reading verbatim, it helps things go a long way. I know we talked about land use already, but one of the things that you'll probably hear about in the upcoming PG-CMA meeting is, they submitted a letter of support for HB 165 regarding municipal audits. There was a local, or maybe a couple of local municipalities in Prince George's County that got, fell behind for various reasons in completing their annual audit. And so they are asking for legislation that would provide them with some flexibility in terms of, if for various reasons, say staffing goes down, and you're having a hard time filling those positions, and you get behind, that you have a little bit of time to get back in good order before you immediately just end up losing your charter. So that letter did come from PG-CMA, and I believe the secretary sent that out to the full body. Okay. The other one is the organized retail theft bill. We submitted a letter on behalf of the town, based on our prior conversations about that. So that is in, with Senator Ron Watson as the bill sponsor. There's also HB 449, SB 148. Delegate Julian Ivy sponsored this previously, and it looks like it's back again this year, but this relates to flooding, flood management. And I'm sorry, I opened up so many tabs, and I'm trying to find it. Oh, my goodness. All right, let me just do a quick search here. So IV HB 449. And I'll just read the brief summary. The title is Comprehensive Flood Management Grant Program, and it's funding for underserved and overburdened communities. So as we're talking about the storm water management, and having LID come in and help us, this, the synopsis is, it's requiring at least 40% of funding provided under the Comprehensive Flood Management Grant Program to be used for projects located in or directly benefiting underserved or underburdened communities, and requiring the governor to include in the annual state budget, an appropriation of at least $20 million for the Comprehensive Flood Management Grant Program, and FY 2026, and each fiscal year thereafter. And I know $20 million across the state may not seem like a lot, but for small communities like ours, even getting $500,000 or a million-dollar grant goes a long way to, yes, help us strengthen our infrastructure. So just wanted to mention that, because I believe it, it's on, the hearing is coming up February 22nd, so we should probably, if the council agrees, submit a letter of support. And if one of you would be willing to testify, that hearing starts at 1:00. And if you can't go to Annapolis, you can do it virtually, but you just have to sign up in advance, and we can work together with the administrator to put testimony together. And we can work together with the administrator to put testimony together. Good question. So through the Maryland General Assembly website, you have to create an account. And then once you've created an account, you can select which bill you're supporting or opposing. And then you can do the option that'll say written testimony or oral, or you can do both. But I can show you, it's all online and setting up the account.
Yeah, Ray, and Ray also has a, he has an account for us, so that he's now posting my letters and stuff like that. So what I can do is I will draft a letter definitely for this one. And if the council members want to let me know if they can do the in-person, we can, I mean, the online presentations, we could do that, or staff can do it if needed. I can read it if necessary from the, from you guys. So either way, just let us know. So I'll say, well, so we'll do, I'll send it out as part of my weekly to say for this one, so that you can do that. I'll put it in my weekly this week.
Excellent. And then Senator Augustine, I know it's too late to sign up for this, but I think it would be good if we could at least send a letter of support to the committee and to him as well, on the Maryland Medical Assistance Program and Health Insurance. So it's basically the same way we get a, a physical every year. There would be a mental health physical and looking at coverage and reimbursement for this. And.
What number is that again?
This is SB one two four.
One two four, okay.
And Senator Augustine is the sponsor.
And when is it?
This is tomorrow. So unfortunately, it's too late to sign up, but we can still submit a letter. And if we get it to Tony, he's down there and he's able to walk it in for us.
I can draft something in the morning. Is it, what, what time is it tomorrow?
One o'clock.
Okay, that gives me the morning to do it. I can work on it in the morning. I was like, I don't have to stay all night? Okay, I can do that in the morning. I'll be here at nine, I'll do it in the morning.
Nope, you actually get to go home and get some sleep.
Okay, great, I'll go home and get some sleep and then I'll come back early, right in early and do it in the morning.
Fresh and caffeinated, right?
Forget it.
The other thing is it's also cross-fired in the House, but that hearing was, it looks like last week. So I can just send you the link, and if you don't mind sending it to both the House and the Senate, that would be good.
I'll have Ray to, Ray knows how to help me with that one, because I just, I write them, he sends them.
Okay. Perfect. The other one I wanted to mention to the council and staff and community was HB two sixty-six. This is residential owners and common ownership communities and establishing a bill of rights with Delegate Holmes, who Sean and I have had the pleasure of seeing him at Parkview for, or Parkway condominiums to try to help some, with some of the challenges there. So this would basically establish a bill of rights for unit owners of a condominium association, members of a cooperative housing corporation, and a lot of owners for a homeowner association. And it is truly important, because sometimes we're finding that you have these boards that come in and they're volunteers that are on the condo association board. Sometimes they make mistakes, sometimes they may do things intentionally, we don't know. But it's the owners who are impacted and they can up and leave. And as owners, we're not so quick to sell our homes and move out, and so we're impacted. So having this bill of rights should definitely help with some of the challenges there. And then the other one that he sponsored, HB two eighty, is, to me, it really could help Parkway with what they're going through. This is the Local Government Condominium and Homeowners Association Repair and Rehabilitation Funds. So with this, a portion of taxes from those homeowners, the town or the municipality or county, whoever the, the body is for that area, would have to assign some of those funds for the repair of that building, should the worst happen. And so if, if we're already getting the taxes and we have to set aside that fund, I don't know, you guys tell me, maybe there's a downside to it. But I feel like it's more reliable, because again, we've seen what happened in some of the local communities where inexperienced volunteers have gotten on these boards. The funds have not been managed well. And the, the, the state of the building has just declined. And it just, it's one of those situations where you hate to see that, because some people can just pick up and move, but that's not the case for everyone. And so for those who can't, we need to have some protections for them, because, you know, they have not done anything wrong and they depended on these boards to manage the funds and, you know, follow their bylaws and maintain the property. So that is HB two eighty. And Delegate Marvin Holmes is the sponsor.
I have that down, so.
Any thoughts or questions about that? Or should, is there something we should consider, maybe amend, not consider fully?
Yeah, I mean, just the only thing from the standpoint of the, that would reduce the amount of taxes and that you would have in regards to those. So it would, so, and it may also help that, I mean, if we did break out Vito separately, multifamily residential, so that at least you can then see that as a separate amount, that might actually be one of the good reasons of doing that, so that you could actually see where those, how much you have. Because that, that'll be, right now, since it's all one pot, it would be hard to, to basically give you that. I think we'd have to run some numbers going through, Sean, I'm looking down at you. Looking at the, the overall, the, the large property, you know, the large multifamily, and then seeing how much those assessments are, those valuations are, and then being able to tell you what the cost to the town would be. If, let's say, we did five, three percent, two percent, or whatever, like a small percentage, like how much would be in a, would be in a fund available for local government? And then what that wouldn't fund as part of our regular general fund? Does that make, so Vito makes sure if I've captured your, your thoughts?
Like a, say, a side fund that the town, you know, would have to keep separate. And this came about because of the capital reserve requirements that went into effect last year, that, that the state of Maryland required homeowners association more than like twelve or fourteen units to have a capital reserve study and to collect enough dues and assessments in order to meet the reserve balance. And all of a sudden, HOAs across the state are getting hit with like, they have to do huge special assessments to meet those reserves. And sometimes if you don't have a strong board, don't have a strong financial board, it's just not happening. And if they don't meet that, then they're, then they're going to have trouble getting insurance or insured at all. So, yeah. Just a little background on that.
Yeah, thank you for that. And then any other legislative session items? Okay, so I'll move on. On the Green Team update, the town staff convened our meeting last week, Monday, I believe it was. And we had our small but mighty team gather to talk about upcoming initiatives and helping us maintain our Sustainable Maryland certification. So we will be planning an effort for Earth Day. And hopefully by the end of the next meeting, we'll have a more formalized plan that we can put out and get a flyer out to the community for volunteers to assist. Right now, we're thinking we'll partner with Anacostia Watershed Society, since they have an initiative planned down at the waterfront for Earth Day. So anything I missed, Town Administrator?
No, ma'am, you're done, you're good. You've, that's, I mean, I think that the Green Team is going to be a great asset to the town and just getting them back up and running again.
I said, do I get to help? I can't plant the dirt.
Yes, you're still one of our supervisors for the Green Team, she keeps us in line. So I know we had Town Administrator updates, but I feel like we kind of covered all that. So is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Brown, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember McBride. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of aye.
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it, thank you so much.